I'd like to convene the uh, January third meeting of the and MB Wakefield MBTA Section three A working group. That one, thank you all for taking the time like as always to uh, out of your busy schedules to uh, meet to discuss this topic. The first order of business is to um, take attendance, uh, so by full call, uh, Matt Lowry.
Here.
Aaron Kokinda.
Sorry, here.
Uh, Robin.
Here.
Matt Bowen.
Here.
And Julie.
Here.
And so Greg uh, is not here and I am as well, so um, we have a quorum. So the next order of business is acceptance of the meeting minutes from December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. Have other members of the working group had a chance to uh, review? The working uh, the meeting minutes from that meeting?
Yes.
Does anyone have any comments? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to accept the December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting minutes as presented by Aaron Kokinda prior to this meeting?
So move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, hearing a motion to accept and a second, I'll take a roll call vote. Uh, Julie Smith Galvin?
Yes.
Matt Bowen?
Yes.
Aaron Kokinda?
Yes.
Robin Greenberg?
Yes.
And Matt Lowry?
Yes.
And myself is yes as well, so that passes six to zero. So uh, with all that being said, um, uh, the agenda for tonight, um, so there are two main topics, uh, I want to make sure that we review. With the, the goal of getting to a point where we can refer a map as well as a bylaw to the planning board for their consideration to then refer that the map and proposed bylaw to the town council. For, sorry. Send it to the planning board, so planning board can send it to town council to be referred back to the planning board for the purposes of holding the public hearings. Um, that we're gonna need to do prior to the inclusion in the warrant. So what I'd like to do, cause I think it's gonna be um, potentially a little more straightforward, is to go to start with the bylaw and then after that move into the map. So with that being said, Aaron, do you mind if I turn it over to you? I know that you've had some back and forth with um, town council Mullen to review the proposed layouts and that there were some, I'll call it late breaking. Edits that were provided to the group.
Yeah, so uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, I received this from Tom Mullen, which I forwarded all to you around six o'clock, so I'm sorry for the or five or whatever I kind of do, um, with the bylaw uh, in a cleaned up version uh, with what it was both like uh, as an article going to town meeting in the spring. Um, I don't know if you all had a chance to look at it, myself included. I have not had a been able to do a deep dive, but from a quick glance, it looks like it's um, pretty much on par, just formatted a little differently than what we've worked on. Um, you know, so Steve and I kind of did a quick revision of it a few, like a month ago. Uh, Jim and I have been looking at it um, offline as well. And um, and then Tom Mullen finally was able to, after we've made all our changes and kind of finalized things, uh, was able to um, kind of put in this format here. Um, so Jim, I don't know, has anyone had a quick chance to glance at it, um? Or has it open now?
Uh, I would open now, so I guess I started looking at the one you had issued yesterday, I guess, with the markups and stuff, so are there places we should look to see what the key differences are?
I think it would just make sense and, and Jim, please step in if you'd like to kind of just go through the whole document, make sure it aligns with what we previously had. Um, in kind of the draft draft version. And um, if we see any glaring things that we think need to be changed or things that we think might be missing, uh, we can make that now, um, but then I think from there, this is what will be passed on um, next weekend to the planning board and then the town council on January twenty-second.
So I don't know, do people, do people see the screen that I just popped open?
Correct, yes.
So I, I think I'm, I'm in agreement, Aaron, that it makes the most sense to go through it at, you know, one last time, a clean version to make sure that we're all in agreement, and then if there's any um, edits, we can, we can have that conversation right now in order to make sure that we're sending something that is actionable to the planning board.
And I think to, to note is, I think no matter what the map pans out to be, I don't foresee this bylaw changing. Um, I think it'll be consistent with whatever the district um, ends up being at town meeting or through the public hearing, so I just want to note that as well, um.
Yep, so uh, so going into it, so uh, adding to town council Mullen's proposal is to add as article uh, XX to the zoning bylaw, chapter one ninety of a code, and to add uh, MBTA community multifamily overlay district or the MCMOD. The establishment of it being that the uh, MBT community is an overlay district, superimposing uh, underlying zoning districts. And then it has some additional language as it relates to how the regulations use and other provisions of the bylaw are remaining in full force, except for as a right per the multifamily mixed-use overlay district. So it's allow for the development of multifamily dwellings within the district, which I understand, looking down below, uh, has, there's a definition that is revised to go from four to three units as a multifamily district uh, as part of this bylaw change. Um, that it's got a provision that does explicitly does not include partial lots, uh, which was a major thing that we were reviewing and trying to make sure they, on the basis of the exclusion of the lots that front North Albion and Main Street. And that it explicitly denotes that the purpose of this district is to allow multifamily dwellings and as in accordance with section three A of general law forty A. So then it goes into permitted use where multifamily dwellings with a maximum of four units are allowed as a right, subject to site plan review as provided with the table of use regulations, and then it establishes the planning board as the site plan review authority. Then trend going down in the dimensional standings, notwithstanding anything contrary to the zoning bylaw, the dimensional requirements applicable in the district shall be set forth in table two of the dimensional regulations. So I think this is a slight change from what we had originally done where town council Mullen is recommending that we bake the dimensional regulations of this into table two in lieu of having it X within the body of this zoning bylaw. I think we had all determined that we didn't necessarily have a strong opinion on that, but we had included it in the body of this text on the recommendation of Chairperson Lieber from the Bylaw Review Committee, but my guess is he would defer to town council Mullen on his recommendation. Anyone, and anyone can stop me at any point as I'm just go, I'm basically reading through the text here, so if anyone has anything, just please raise your hand or just start interrupt me, uh, feel free. Multiple buildings in the multifamily district, lots may have more than one principal building. The limitations for height shall be, shall apply to, shall not apply to chimneys, ventilators, towers, elevator shafts, silos, spires, or other features, um, and they, as long as they don't constitute more than twenty-five percent of the floor area of the building. Switching over to parking on the same lot or off lot by special permit, so it's based, this is established, I believe that this is the language establishes that required off-street parking shall be provided on the same lot they serve, except for the planning board might be prevent, permit off-street areas to be riding in another lot of the same ownership as the principal use. But at no distance of two hundred feet away from the lot that they're designated to serve, which is consistent with the existing bylaw for parking that's on the books in Wakefield today. Construction of the off-street parkings may be open or enclosed in a structure that provided is open, so that area shall be created, drained surface and performance of the applicable building and engineering standards. The balance, this language is all consistent, it was lifted directly from the parking bylaw that's on the books in Wakefield right now. The size of the construction parking spaces is each required off-street parking space shall be marked and shall be not less than nine feet in width and eighteen feet in length for angle parking or twenty-two feet for parallel parking exclusive drives, walks, and maneuvering space, again, consistent with the language in the parking bylaw. And then last number, last.
Oh, no, Jim.
Sure.
Um, section three, we need a period at the end.
Okay, good catch. Um, and then the last one is the number of parking spaces where after the conversations with the traffic advisory, the minimum uh, number of off-street parking spaces shall be one and a half spaces per dwelling unit. We did not reduce it down to something either one, two point two five or one, and then it shall be either surface or within garages or other structures. I think the main difference in this, as I understand the way we writ, wrote it, is that we're requiring one and a half units of off-street parking. We've defined that has to be on the same lot or it can be off by special permit. And we've defined what the construction of it and the size of the parking spaces, but we don't have the language that's in the existing parking bylaw that requires the alleyway or the access to the drive aisle, which provides significant relief from a geometry perspective, so this would in theory allow for tandem parking spaces and other uh, easier to accommodate with site plan review. And it's, it's because this is still subject to site plan review, if there was something egregiously um, with the way that the, the parking was arranged, the planning board would have the ability to comment. Um, the thought process is that with some of the lot sizes that we're talking about in this, on, on these, that if we tried to impose the requirements for that drive aisle lane, that's in the existing parking regulations, that that would make it so some of these buildings would not be feasible. This is my baseline understanding, if anyone has any uh, any disagreements or has any different understandings, please feel free to let me or to say so.
Hey Jim, this is Greg, I just want to say, I, I apologize, I'm just leaving the office now, just joined.
Oh, okay, thank you Greg for uh, for hopping on and uh, we're just going, just to your reference Greg, we're just going through the bylaw right now. Town council Mullen went through and made some edits and I'll say cleaned it up and made it uh, more appropriate for incorporation of the bylaw. We'll go through that, the intent would be to go through the maps afterwards and then try to get to a point where we can um, have something that we can recommend to the planning board at the conclusion of this meeting.
Okay, I'll be home in a minute or two, then I'll join the video.
Okay, so then the uh, mo- motoring through the, the bylaw, the next uh, section is related to the development standards. We redefine the standards that for a building to uh, conform with the requirements of the multifamily mixed-use, multifamily district, so site uh, site plan developments for the uh, district shall include connections, so sidewalks shall provide a direct connection among building entrance, public sidewalk, and vehicular and bicycle parking. Where feasible, curb cuts shall be minimized and shared driveways encouraged. Parking surface may be concrete, asphalt, decomposed granite, bricks, pay or pavers, including previous materials, but not including grass or soil contained, not contained within a paver or other structure. Plantings, uh, planting is encouraged to use the use of native vegetation, refer to the Wakefield, town of Wakefield Conservation Commission native planting policy. Want to pause here, Aaron, did that policy pass last night?
I haven't had a chance to watch the meeting or connect with someone in Concom, um, I'm going to say yes, does anyone happen to know? On here?
I'm just curious to find out what happened, so that's.
Yeah, I will, uh, I'll find out, um, as soon as possible.
The intent is that the, this, this bylaw would more or less defer to the Concom and their planting policy. So the next section being the outdoor lighting plan, that indicates that plants must show the location and type of outdoor lighting and lighting fixtures. Said lighting shall be designed to minimize glare and light spill over into adjacent properties and streets. And that all exterior lighting shall be installed to be shielded or downcast to avoid light to trespass on the adjacent properties. Lighting fixtures shall be selected in accordance with dark, dark sky compliance principles and plan shall depict lighting intensity as in foot candles in an appropriate grid. And that all lighting shall be limited to fifteen feet in height and cast in a maximum shadow, maximum eight foot candles of light on the ground. And light shall be also directed to blind, not blind vehicular or pedestrian traffic, shine into adjacent buildings or spill into abutting properties. So I think this is the one that has the most changes uh, from what I've seen so far. Uh, as it relates to, I believe that a lot of this language is from the Concom. And we, and we even threw a little bit of this last time, but does any other member of the working group have any uh, reaction to that additional language?
No, I, I like it, I mean, I think the previous version referenced somewhat standards of dark sky, but we're showing our intense, you know, having it lowercase and certainly noting uh, lighting height limits will make a huge difference on um, the casting of impacting adjacent, you know, adjacent properties and residents.
The only question I would have in the group is that, is this? Cause my understanding is that these types of lighting studies, and maybe Robin, you can educate me a little bit in your line of profession, um, but they're typically, you have to get like a specialty designer to do them, right?
Not necessarily, um, some of the sellers of lighting will do the lighting analysis for you, so I didn't take that, I mean, so you know, your, your electrical engineer could tell you your foot candles, but even just looking at some light fixtures can tell you if you mounted a certain way, so I don't think this is written as such that it requires to have someone hire somebody, you know, it doesn't put that burden on them, but certainly it would be a way for them to document that they're um, meeting it. I mean, you know, the, the higher something is, the bigger the problem is, or the foot candles, you know, so you know, the cut sheets that you buy of light fixtures can answer some of those questions and be available as part of their package to the planning board. So.
Yeah, I think the language, uh, I actually, Bill Renaud worked with me on this, um, pulling from another community, um, like uh, Robin just said, I think we, the planning board could work with them on that to make sure everything's sufficient.
Okay, anyone else have any, any other questions, comments, or concerns? If not, then I'll move over to stormwater management, so there is a refer to storm drain or to section one seventy, storm drain system, stormwater management for stormwater bylaw and associated requirements. That's a change we had made to defer that to another section of the bylaws that are more uh, uh, maintained, for lack of a better term, by the, the entities that are managing that specific aspect of the public's infrastructure. And then off-site improvement plans, so plan shall depict full design grading and layouts for any work required within the public right of way to support the project. Not includes, but not limited to pedestrian traffic and utility improvements, which I think just makes total sense. So some of the other uh, items in terms of our design standards are related to buildings, so the primary building shall have its principal sod and entrance on the principal street, except for a set forth below respective corner lots. And that entry shall be clearly defined and linked to a paved pedestrian network that includes the public's sidewalk or right of way. All multifamily dwellings shall have outdoor space that residents can access, such space shall be located in a combination of the ground floor, courtyard, rooftop, or terrace. Space shall be either shared amongst residents or allocated on a unit by unit basis. And then buildings for corner lots, a building on a corner lot shall have a primary entrance along either one of the street facing facades or on the primary corner as this entrance to, to serving both streets. Such entryways shall be connected by a paved surface to the public right of way or sidewalk. And all facades visible from a public right of way shall be treated with similar care, attention to details, entries, penetration, materials. And then fire slops, fire escapes serving more than one story should not be located on either of the street state facing facades. So I want to pause, does anyone have anything in that list of elements that I just ran through?
Is that pretty standard, just consistent with language that's already part of zoning? Or is this coming from this, I'm just curious?
What part?
Well, like, I'm surprised the fire escapes can only not be on the street facing. I don't care one way or the other, I'm just gonna, just curious if that's pretty common.
Yeah, it's like, I'm correct, maybe wrong Greg, I don't know if they'd be have any language specifically related to fire escapes in the existing.
Yeah, I was gonna, about to say the same thing, I, it's in the six years I've been on the ZBA, never come up, so I don't know if it's either not existing or just isn't an issue.
I mean, from a safety standpoint, you would want the fire escape where it's best, you know, that's located, but I guess if you're designing, then you can put it.
It's an aesthetic thing, I mean, cause they're gonna, you know, design, you know, all four sides or however sides, you know.
Okay.
Yeah, and as long as that isn't inconsistent with code, then we might as well try to get as much sort of protection for the community, for my communities, the neighborhood, that as, as much as we can.
Sure, okay.
Computer, by the way, so.
And I, I think this may come in more for reuse of buildings, um, because then you have less options of where you can have access, so. Um, I, I think it is a good protection because it's almost taken over home and something staircase, or the fire, fire escape of the, you know, the front side. People would uh, not fit they wrote that, so. I'm fine with it sometimes.
And, and again, I guess if it is an existing property that someone's trying to convert and the fire escape facing the street is the only option, then they can ask for a variance and have that discussion to show that that is their only option. I mean, of the two fire escapes I can think of in the neighborhood for multifamily, they're both on corner lots, interesting enough, one is kind of on the side yard. If, if you think of where the principal doors are, and it's aesthetically okay, the other one actually has it in the back, you see it cause it's a corner lot, but so, you know, people's approach to it is, you know, differs.
Yeah, I'm not finding anything currently in our bylaws, so we must have pulled that language somewhere else, but I think it's good to have.
That's from the uh, the
The
template from the state.
Yeah.
Okay, so then in terms of parking for buildings, parking shall be supported in design and location of the principal building facade. Surface parking shall be located on the rear or side of the building. Parking shall not be located between the building and any lot line that's adjacent to the right of way. Basically outline, outline the ability of people to park on the front lawns, we talked about last, last time. And then integrated just garages, if applicable, pedestrian, principal pedestrian entryway in the building should be more prominent in design and placement than the vehicular entry to the garage. Anything that relates to buildings and parking before we move on? Okay, so in that case, over to site plan review. So applicability, site plan review is required for any buildings through three or four dwelling units. An application for site plan review shall be reviewed by the planning board for consistency and purposes uh, and intent of sections three, C through E. And that as part of the application, the application must submit an application fee for site plan review. The site plan shall show a position of building on the site, points vehicular access to and from the site, and vehicular circulation on the site, stormwater management, utilities, and landscape treatments, including any screening of adjacent properties and other information commonly required by the planning board for site plan review. Uh, elevation of the buildings shall be shown in the architectural design and that all site plans shall be prepared by an architect, landscape architect, and or civil engineer registered in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. All plans shall be signed and stamped and drawings repaired at scale of one to forty or larger or scale appropriate, approved in advance by the planning board. And a narrative of compliance with the applicable uh, development standards. Uh, so just, I kind of ran through all those, but any, any specific things that anyone's worried about as it relates to requirements for the submission of a site plan review?
Uh, I do, um, so item item D, uh, all plans shall be prepared by an architect, landscape architect, or civil engineer. These really should be plans that accurately show the building as it related to the property map. Nothing in here that a survey needs to do this, so. Any other submission, you need to have a plot plan. Ac- an accurate plot plan to show that a patient building, so. I don't think this is consistent with what we currently would want to see. And I don't think we want to have hopefully an architect or a landscape architect in preparing these plans. Because they're more most sketchy than, than actual.
And, and nor should an architect take on that liability either, but that's just, I.
Yeah, right. So I, I think this needs to be looked at, and also uh, item E. They, they should not be prepared at a forty scale, at a, really should be a twenty scale or ten scale for the side of lots that we're, we're looking at Wakefield, so. You want to make sure this is not on an eight and a half by eleven plan, we want something large enough for you can see some detail on. So I think these two need to be addressed.
Um, Matt, for going back to D real quick, do you think that we need another um, point there saying with the survey and plot lines, or do we add something there?
Uh, I think you, you may want to add that a an, an accurate uh, plot plan needs to be prepared, and then from, from that then you know, a civil engineer or an architect, landscape architect, you work from that point.
Yep.
Aaron or Jim, so that language about drawings is different from the last time I looked at it, was that based on uh, Mr. Mullen's suggestions or in terms of scales and stuff?
Uh, it must be, um, I'm scrolling through now. Uh, the the drawings we sent to him said one inch equals um, has the same. One equals forty or larger uh, that we sent over, um. But.
The, the one inch equals forty usually falls to design of roadways and things, so I think maybe this is a carryover from engineering. Because a one to forty scale is really, we don't see any detail.
Is uh, is the, can you guys see the, I, I just pulled up the red line from our twelve nineteen meeting? Can you guys see that, or is it, you see the?
No, no, we see it.
Yeah, so I think I'm trying to see if we had uh, something about a survey or a plot plan, not sure if we do.
We didn't.
Yeah, I, I don't think there was one originally included, so.
Okay, so then the other place that I, we could look for that to bear with me is I am pulling up, this is the um, the planning board's actually going through the subdivision rules and regs right now, and the ring board's not gonna be helpful. Matt, do you, do you recall when we were doing this, the subdivision rules and regs where we have the information regarding the the survey and or the plot plan requirement?
I don't often. I believe actually it was in uh, it was the first item for required plans.
Find it real quick.
Yeah, so that, that one to forty is the same as what's in the planning board regulations right now. Three oh five.
I mean, I ge- it does say that there's a um, or approved by the planning, so if it's not of a scale that's useful, it can be talked about. I guess, I, I think your point about the meaning of plot plan is an important addition.
Does it, so is this? Oh wait, is this? Actually, I apologize, I think that's the A and R section. Let me find the right subdivision fees.
It's three oh five dash two.
Three oh five dash two. Cause Matt, this is, so if we, if it's for a definitive plan, we had this, this section where we were requiring.
Keep scrolling, I'll get the next one.
Form and contents. No.
We fall down.
So I just did a quick search of just all of the zoning and only plot plans only came up twice, and one was in reference to um, animal licensing that.
Right there, Jim. Right there, Jim. Existing conditions plans, now this is the current one that I want, correct, that's this isn't the revision they're working on.
I think this is, this is the one that we were reviewing as a planning board in July, I think is currently in with. Um, the office or the town engineer's office for their review and comment.
Um, all right, I'll have to check that because I remember we were changing it from an existing, just have an existing conditions plan to start with. Uh, and not have an existing conditions and demolition plan. We were trying to get one solid plan to know what was on the site. So I don't, I think this is about current. Bylaw is not the one we're editing right now. I don't have them on my computer at home yet, so.
I think I have the one dated twelve four twenty three, um.
Can you pull that one up, Aaron?
Yeah, yeah.
So if we're just talking about the scale, you might want to mirror, I mean, I looked at the. At three or five, so if we're looking at zoning. But site plan is going to be in the planning board, so it's different, but one ninety. What is it, one ninety twenty nine B five? Just says site plans, which is zoning. So it would be different if this the site plan review authority is the the planning board, but. In front of the zoning board, it says site plans should be at a suitable scale. Prepared by a registered land surveyor or registered professional uh, civil engineer.
Yeah, so I have this language here, uh, it's a fee. And uh, Matt Lowry, um, and Greg, yeah, I saw that in three, what was it, three oh five four? Um, it's uh, uh, oh my gosh, definitive plan shall be prepared, the same thing you just said. And then, yeah, we have the one by forty and a vertical scale of one uh, by four. Uh, unless the board approves another scale, so I'm wondering. And I'll leave this to you guys too, um, maybe more Matt, who is the surveyor. Um, and has been on the plane for a long time, do you think this language is appropriate to include in the bylaw? In front, you know, on top of. The architect engineer.
Matt, if he wants something different, I would suggest mirroring the zoning. Language rather than the planning board language, which just says suitable, so it leaves it up to you, up to the planning board to decide.
I I think the zoning one is more, you know, would be better. Most, most people that bring a plan. On. On the scale of lots we're talking about in Wakefield would know would be a twenty, ten or twenty scale, maybe a thirty, that's about it. Yeah, so suitable, a plan prepared by. A land surveyor and civil engineer at a suitable scale would be appropriate.
So Aaron, maybe just take the 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 first. Line of this. And then, um. You have that be included and then the second line. You just say the plan should be submitted, you know, on on D size sheets at a suitable scale and just leave it at that.
Okay. Uh, okay, we're taking out. The size, size suitable, D scale, okay.
And Aaron, I can, I can send you some some information tomorrow on that too.
All right, I just added that language to mine uh, that Tom has here, um. Uh, maybe I'll have you uh, take a look or and add anything you think. Okay. Great, good call. Um, one other thing I wanted to point out is we call out a, I might stop sharing my screen now, Jim, you want to share? Yours again, um. Is the fee? And I don't know, I couldn't find a site plan review fee unless I'm missing it somewhere.
Would we have to list one if it's already in the instructions for anything that goes to the planning?
I think typically, if it, because it's zoning, you don't typically, you. It's typically best practice to not include a specific fee, because then if you want to change the fee, you have to go. And have a zoning change and give a two thirds vote. At town meeting, whereas if it's a rule or regulation, then it can be done by the body that. Administers that. That fee.
And would be also then trigger FinCom review?
I don't. We do have a fee in our bylaw.
Yeah, ours lives in our bylaw.
One ninety eighty two. Twenty five for signs, one twenty five for variance and special permit.
I know that, I know that we have it now, but I think my understanding is that as part of the. Bylaw rezoning codification process that that's potentially going to be coming out and be transferred to rules and regs going forward.
Do we just want to mirror since from at least the. What I've been told from our, the ZBAs Lee is on to. The recodification is that's like two years behind us or something like that, eighteen months or something, sort of just mirror. Or just, or just, or just relate to.
Do we even need a fee? Just put it that way. One, because we're not hard, we're not going to be submitting anything else. It's going to be the the honest of the of the applicant to provide the plans. So, and the the planning board will be reviewing this at some of their meetings, so. Is a fee even necessary?
Yeah, because a lot of times the fees that we get for definitive or preliminaries for other. Notification, any sort of printing I have to do, um. Public hearings, things like that, and we aren't asking for any of that in this. So. Um, you know, why don't you put a note there? I can um, kind of bounce that idea. Internally.
Okay, uh, anything else on the submission requirements before we move on? Okay, moving on to timeline, so the site plan review should be commenced no later than thirty days of the submission of the complete application. And shall be completed expeditiously. The site plan authority may, when appropriate, seek the input of additional municipal boards or officials. In general, site plan review shall be completed within six months of submission of the application, provided that no failure to meet deadlines. As set forth, uh, shall result in construct constructive approval. Site plan approval, site plan approval for uses listed in section B above permitted uses shall be granted upon. Termination of planning board that the following conditions have been satisfied. The planning board may impose reasonable conditions at the expense of the applicant to ensure these conditions have been satisfied. Conditions set forth are as follows. The applicants um, shall be submit, uh, the applicant has submitted the required fees which may come out. And information as um, set forth in the town's requirements for building permit and site plan review. And the project as described meets the uh, development standards. Separability, uh, if any provision of this article is found to be invalid. Uh, by a court of competent jurisdiction, the remainder of the article shall not be affected, but shall remain in full force and effect. The invalidity invalidity of any provision of this article shall not affect the validity of the remainder of the zoning bylaw. And then. The other components that uh, town council Mullen uh, recommended is adding to the zoning bylaw, the following definitions for as of right. Development that may be received under the zoning in place at the time of the application without the need for a special permit variance. Zoning amendment, waiver, or other discretionary zoning approval. And then revising the first sentence of the multifamily dwelling in the existing zoning bylaw. To change the word four to three, so that it will read as follows. A building other than an attached building as defined herein. Designated or intended for the use as a home of three or more families, each in a separate dwelling unit living independently. Of each other who may have common right in halls and stairways. And then. Um, so first off, before I keep moving, does anyone have any comments on those ones I just went through in terms of as of right or the multifamily dwelling definitions?
So just a procedure question, that changer to the multifamily dwelling, since it's already in the bylaw would not be with us. Right?
I believe it would be. It's part, because it's part of the compliance pathway for. This bylaw. We have to change the multifamily dwelling in definition from four to three in order to allow multifamily. In this district to be able to have three or four units.
So would that be two different?
That's what I'm wondering, different article?
Yeah. Two different. Votes essentially at. Town meeting, could you, could you go go up a little bit, what?
Cause you're saying.
Cause we're not. Cause that's a change of current one ninety. And then this is an addition. That's two separate articles. Right, at town meeting? And that's just a procedure question, I guess it it's neither here nor there for what we're talking about tonight, but. Being two separate articles, that's sort of two. Bite to the apple, I guess, if you want to talk about it that way from. If if one passes, but the other doesn't, right, no matter which one. The whole issues move.
Which maybe why he tried to put it together.
But can you, I guess, is my question, because it's two separate, one's existing, one's not.
So I think it's a good question, I I think what we can do is we can put that as a to do to follow up with town council Mullen.
Yeah.
Uh, since he's ultimately the one who'll be able to provide us with the legal guidance, but it's a good question. It got kind of similar, right, where the revising the table of use regulations. Um, by adding the following line after entry for creative development for multifamily dwelling unit. And then it's got. All these different uh. Uh, principal permitted uses in terms of what can or cannot be occur and it's. Everything's no except for the multifamily mixed use overlay district. And then he he's, the other items would be to uh, amend the bylaw by uh, adding. Uh, a number of places where, you know, mixed use, MBTA, community multifamily overlay district. In different sections of the zoning bylaw to make sure that it's applicable, it looks like. Uh, adding the following at the end of chapter one ninety sixty eight, the zoning bylaw, eighteen, the MBTA. Communities multifamily overlay district is a special overlay district to allow multifamily dwellings as a right in accordance with. General law, chapter forty eight, three A. And subject only to site plan review of the planning board and is shown in the zoning map entitled MBTA communities multifamily overlay district. Within such district, all provisions of the zoning bylaw shall be applicable. To underlying districts shall continue to apply except for as provided in article XX of the zoning bylaw and then to add. Uh, another section where. It would state the MBTA community multifamily district is located as shown on a separate map entitled MBTA communities overlay district map dated. You know, X date twenty twenty four and amending the Wakefield zoning map adopting the MBTA communities multifamily overlay district dated. A copy of which is filed for inspection of the town clerk or to see what they do, do town will do about it. So I think unless I'm hearing differently, I think the takeaway that is. The check whether or not that there'd be two separate articles because we're amending something. Is there? Can the fee be omitted? And, um, to update that language.
Yeah, or if not omitted, then we'll need to set what that fee obviously will be because that how. That will be a penalty. Can't charge any more than that's needed.
Okay. So I think those those with those.
There's also the we have to reassure conservation commission pass the uh. The thing. And if it's, so. This is fine if they don't pass, then we have to strike it out.
Yeah, I already put out uh, something out, so hopefully have an answer. I tried to see if I could find anything. I meant to get to that today.
And that one was this. Past. Native. Native. Plant. Policy. Okay, any other questions, concerns or comments on this bylaw before we? Before we uh, potentially move on? So I guess the the only other question I would have is, and Aaron, can you help me figure out from a process perspective? If we are in agreement that this is the bylaw we want to go with with these, uh, called four outstanding items. Well, really three outstanding items in terms of the content and then one as it relates to. The ability to submit it to town as currently constituted in one instead of two articles. Do um, can we pass something saying that, you know, this is the bylaw pending these? Three or four items, um, you know, being finalized between now and the. When it actually goes to the warrant.
Or you're saying for next? For next week when we go to the planning board and town council?
Yeah.
I think that's fine, I I don't know legally, but I if I've heard you could make, you know. The changes, if these changes, then it should be fine. Julie, do you know anything, like, have you done that before?
But we're also not, we're also not officially.
Yeah, it's just a draft still, yeah, I think as long as everyone's comfortable here with. Referring this to the planning board for next week to then be referred to the town council and then back to the planning board, I think. That's fine.
Yeah, I just think, I think the vote can be, you know, we're voting on this. And kind of lay out the issues that are are still. Open.
Yeah. I think that should be fine.
And if we're all okay. Assuming that they could, if they could be. Resolved by Jim and Aaron in the next. Few days, we give them the authority to do so.
Right.
Unless we feel like for some reason, we all need to vote on it.
Okay, so in that case, um, what I would like to do is I would like to take a roll call or. If I hear a motion, I'd like to take a motion to refer the bylaw as presented to the planning board. With the outstanding items of whether or not the this could be one or two separate articles based on the basis of the change to. Three or four units for the multifamily district definition. Uh, confirmation of the either the omission or setting of a fee value. Updating the language to be consistent with the. Planning board definitive plan language for a cert site surveyor and the dimensional scale as applicable. And. Us on confirming that the conservation commission passed a native plant policy. And if so, uh, no change, and if if. They did not to re- review that particular article and reference.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, so uh, got uh, moved by Julie seconded by Robin, so roll call vote, uh, Matt Lowry?
Yes.
Matt Bowen?
Yes.
Aaron Kokinda?
Yes.
Greg McIntosh?
Yes.
Robin Greenberg?
Yes.
And Julie Smith Galvin?
Yes.
Awesome, well, one, thank you all for the, for all the efforts to get the, at least this half of it. Um, complete and um, and I'm very excited to uh, to have at least a chunk of, a chunk of hard work done. So now I'd like to pivot over to uh, to the maps. So I believe a number, um, so. Uh, Aaron sent over some core email correspondence, um, as it relates to some concerns related to what the proposed maps are. That we are going through, uh, Aaron, mind if I turn it over to you and you kind of set the table? And then we can start going through, um, I know last time we had voted and talked about. Uh, proceeding with this map as our proposed map. Um, but there was a request to make, uh, to potentially reconsider by some members of the uh. Some members of the town.
Yeah, so I know the way we left it last time is I was going to look at kind of scaling down. Um, what we're currently looking at here, this uh, four or five district, whatever you, way you want to look at it. Um, and so I went around, um, and played around with um, some of these districts here and created some different situations. Put it in the compliance model to see what the numbers kind of turned out. Um, just to kind of, I I know, um, who wasn't here last time, Greg, um. You know, Steve was on the call and was telling us, you know, a town meeting, um, if. It comes back to us saying that they'd like to see smaller and be at the minimum compliance. Um, what these different models would look like, we could go down in size, but we couldn't add things. Um, to the, to the map, and so I sent probably right before the holidays, um, I don't know if you all had a chance to look at it. Um, some different models with that compliance figures and what that may look like if we were to scale down.
Aaron, would you like, would you like to take over and, and drive or do you want me to continue?
Sure, why don't I do that? Um, so I think we all can agree that we did hear from folks um, in some of those calls, we went through this last time, both positive and. And negative, um, you know, a lot of people did say that uh, would like to see minimum compliance. But there's a lot that goes behind that, goes on behind the scenes to meet that minimum compliance and something for this group to note. And um, no, moving forward is, you know, even though we have sixteen ninety six as our minimum, I'm a little hesitant to get right to that. Sixteen ninety six or seventeen hundred for that matter of housing units, because. My concern is the state could come back to us and say, this isn't working, this isn't working, and then we're back to ground zero again. And we're under our minimum compliance. Um, and so I just wanted to put that out there. Um, and so what I did here is I kind of went through and played around with the four or five districts that we discussed. Um, throughout this whole process and to look at ways I could scale it down. I know last time I showed you guys uh, different models, including Greenwood as well. Um, and something else I'll kind of talk to as well, if we were to. For some reason, look at Greenwood again, the whole uh contiguous uh fifty percent. Is a big factor that plays into this if we scale any of these districts down a little more. So sorry, this is all just, if you need me to explain it more, please just raise your hand and I'll, I'll, I'll kind of explain it a little better. So what you're looking at now is um, a five district that's kind of scaled down based on what we talked about here, this whole Salem Street area, removing this. Uh, that's here, um, removing, um, I believe I removed some of this. Here, I, I don't recall if that was there, but that was their part of it. Um, and kind of made this district a little smaller here. One and two have stayed the same, um, I think we can all agree that, you know, this is in our downtown core right by the train. We see a number of two to three families in this area already. Um, three, I also uh, scaled down as well, I moved the line from um, Walnut Street, which is right here. Chestnut Street to uh, Cedar, which is something we've talked about uh, quite a bit as well, the whole Cedar Street area and kept Valby in. Five has stayed the same. And so by plugging those numbers in the compliance model. And everyone, did you guys all have a chance to look at this packet as well and kind of digest it? Yeah.
I, I saw it, I have to say, I, I had a hard time understanding the differences without.
Yeah, so this is kind of situation one, scaling down uh, the west side as well as uh, four D here. Um, this brings us to, and these are the, the important numbers you want to look at here is this, uh, I guess I should point down here. Is this is what the final uni- unit capacity per district would be, this is down around two hundred. From uh, what we're proposing here, uh, with the five district at the full capacity, so it brings us down to two thousand one hundred and thirty eight units. Um, dwelling units per acre, again, we have to be at fifteen, we're at seventeen point nine. Um, I think something just to note, you'll see here, uh, the district acreage, this includes all rightaways, if not by parcels. Um, you'll see here that um, we are um, completely. Um, would be, these two districts are actually, you add these two together to get your fifty percent contiguous, because you at Yale have and. Um, the west side, that's where they meet. Um, so we would be in compliance with this model and I can talk about that more. Um, this is another one that I put together, so uh, again, still Cedar Street, but I removed. Uh, in the previous one, you'll remember, if you recall, I had this area up here. Um, this is the Elm Street area, um, I removed that, uh, really just cut off here at Cedar, um. This is all the same, uh, the first one I just shown, removing the Salem Street area and the Pleasant Street area, these are all the same. Um, this brings it down another about a hundred, uh, brings us around two thousand and twenty nine uh, units. Uh, the dwelling units per acre is seventeen point five. Um, again, we would still meet that fifty percent contiguous, seventy five percent would be within that station area, which is all important numbers I have to follow. There's a lot, you have to um, kind of still fit other than these two things here. And then the third model I put together, um, a smaller scale is, um, this is the same as the last two I showed you. These are all the same, but a smaller west side, so this goes to Emerson and I, I stuck to, you know, keeping it on both sides. Um, of the street, um, but included the Elm Street compared to the, the second one, which didn't have Elm Street. Um, and then the, the first one did have Elm Street. Um, this brings us right to that sixteen ninety nine, which makes me a little nervous, um. It's just, uh, one parcel could change something, um, and then we'd below that sixteen ninety six, so, um. We're still at the, have the numbers here, we would still be fine when it, uh, uh, when it comes to um, what the, the fifty percent contiguous. Um, but those are the three different models I played around with to kind of scale down. Um, I was playing together with some other figures in how to incorporate Greenwood again, the smaller district in Greenwood and I, I, um.
Aaron, before we jump to Greenwood, can we talk about those three options?
Yeah, yeah.
So I agree with you that the third one is cutting it too close and if our. Understanding doesn't match the state, then we wouldn't be in compliance, so I would take the third one off the table. Suggestion. Um, of the other two, I, I do see the logic of adjusting them, so I'm, I'm interested to hear what others think.
Is my first question would be especially with the. First one, if I remember right, I did look at these. And with uh, district five or E. If we removed that, it looks like we might still be. Close enough on the numbers. Um, pure enough, but would we still be there with density? Uh, with the fifteen units breaker, because it looks like it's pretty dense, um. And that would get us closer to that minimum and that seems to be. The, I don't know, what do I call it, to outlier or not as connected to the others.
So that's right here?
Yeah. We might not be there with density though, I don't know.
Yeah, let me uh, quickly, I have not done that, um, just with that removal, but I could do that, um. Within this meeting, just so it gives you a better idea. I think we may still, um, because right now we're, I did a quick math, where is it, um? Where'd it go? Um, so that's district E, um. You'll see that, so it'd be, uh, subtract two hundred units from that, from what that current number is here, um.
Yeah, but it's, it's, so the two hundred seems to be.
No, yeah.
I was gonna say, is that really sixty? Then if that's the truth, then we won't be there.
Change anything, yeah. Let me, um, I don't know where that came from. Okay, so I know if you guys want to keep talking, I'll play around with that, I'm not sure why that has that, but if you want to keep playing around with that.
And the reason, the only reason I ask that, I guess, is to if we are looking to get closer to that minimum. But still keep it on in sort of a downtown area without having to go to Greenwood, will we? You know, sort of understood that it'll be larger projects that are by right, which people don't seem to want either. That little, excuse me, that area seems to be the most logical to sort of scale down. I think we, that was one of the last areas we talked about adding anyways. Um, so which to me seems to be a good idea to top first to re- to remove if we still get the numbers.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I'd be in favor of doing that, I think. Um, for the district up by Pleasant Street, I think if we continue up to Pleasant Street, you're adding in. You know, the rest of the street, cutting the street down. I, I think you're still gonna have. You know, issues with some people on the street being an elderly family, others in a different general, so. I, I think extending that district up to Pleasant Street would, would be fair and. Still be consistent with trying to center this, with a walkability to the downtown.
I'm sorry, I just inputted um, the wrong district density denominator, so you can see how this compliance model is. There's a lot of numbers and things to play around with, it does bring it down to twenty five, um. And brings us to seventeen point one, but if we were to remove that completely, uh, I could get you that answer too, uh, going back to Greg's thing. And I'm sorry, Matt, what did you just say?
Um, I don't know about the district number, if you could switch back to that, that map.
Yeah.
So, uh, yeah, district four, if you just push those up to. Um, include the original one we have there. And, and you've taken out a couple up in the top corner, correct? I don't know if that.
Yeah, I took, yeah, I took this and then I believe we had this too, if I recall, um.
Yeah, it's on the last page of the packet and.
Was that part of it, if I recall?
Yeah, it's, it does include it, except for there's a carve out on Vernon Street for the, the first fifty feet.
So I guess part of this too is, as we're thinking about, you know, a whole district or district, a whole section. But then we're also talking about, oh, I removed part of it. If we're really talking about a few parcels, to still fit what? Minimum, but also what makes sense, or what is good for the town? Then I guess my question is, what are we really going back and forth about? If we're only going to remove a few parcels, simply to get to the minimum, does that really make sense for the town? Just, just a handful of parcels here and there, if that makes sense, I, I. I think we've got to an area where, where we think it makes sense to include closer to both sides of the downtown. Rather than all closer to the train tracks, which in our case are not, you know, are close to, but not centered on downtown. But I don't think we want to get into the. World where we're just debating on one or two parcels either, if that makes sense. I, I, I know that people are, we've had a lot, hey, we just need to do the minimum, but if the minimum is sort of. You know, doesn't make sense for the town, do we want to get into that, you know, cut off nose to spite your face type of argument?
So I, go ahead.
As I said, I, I think that a thoughtful approach is the right way to do it, but in terms of getting enough votes, we may have to. Think, you know, do some of the, um. A little less thoughtful, if that makes sense, like, I like the holistic way we've thought about things, but people seeing the higher number. Could keep the whole thing from passing.
So my question to that would be. And I don't know if we've thought about it yet, I think we've thought about it, it's maybe Jim or Aaron might know better. If it doesn't pass at spring, one, I think we said we could always present a smaller, if the first one doesn't pass. And then we have fall too, I, I, I guess I don't want to be in the position where we're simply, well, this is what we've heard, we're gonna do the minimum. Because that's what we think people will say. If we can at least present a thoughtful, well, I mean, how many hours have we spent on this at this point? Where, you know, I, I don't think where. You know, in a position where some of the other towns, I think, was it Lexington, it was like, yes, let's blow this out, let's make it huge. I think we are trying to make it thoughtful, I think we can all agree that we, we don't think the law was, or the, it was written correctly or well thought out. But we need to make it work. For Wakefield, and if it's simply a, if I, I think well thought out, I would rather put my name to something that's well thought out rather than. Here's the minimum, but at the end of the day in twenty years, isn't gonna really work and look good for Wakefield. If we, and if we have. Two bites at the apple, rather than going back and forth with here's two or three parcels or even ten parcels to make this work at the absolute minimum. It just doesn't make sense to me when, when we've spent this many hours looking at this.
So Greg, last week Steve Mayo said that the fall town meeting may actually be an issue.
Yeah, I, I watched, it didn't seem to, do we actually know, I guess it's my question.
And I don't think this, no, it's either.
Honestly, I kind of, I have a hard time underwriting that if you pass something. And this, the AG hasn't approved it, but you've passed it, that they're gonna come down on you, I mean, that just does, that seems farcical. You, you, I mean. Edit the concern, but I can't imagine that if you pass something as, you know, in the, on the, in submitted to the AG. That they're gonna nail you on that technicality. I can't imagine that like Milton or any of the other towns that delayed until the very last minute, I mean, I can't imagine any of those are Rain Tree. You know, that they all submitted in the second half of December in twenty, you know, twenty three, so I can't imagine those have gone and gotten passed by the AG already.
Well, they do have to, they have to earlier though, they still have to go to the AG.
They were procedurally different as cities than us having a town meeting body, that was what Steve's point was that. We, we trigger a different review that they don't have.
I, I get that point, but I guess I still go either way, it's not on our timeline, it's on theirs. How are they gonna come down on us? I mean, I, I, I guess if I'm a, a housing advocate at that point, my argument in court is, it's not on our timeline, it's on yours. So how are you gonna come down on us to something you haven't done? So I guess what my thing. Is I'd rather be more thoughtful about this than, oh, I don't know what the AG is gonna do. At the end of the day, whatever the, it needs to work for Wakefield rather than work for the AG.
And I, I agree with, with Greg, we, we thought this out, we, we're trying to take into consideration. You know, something that doesn't work the best for Wakefield because of the way our stations align with our downtown, so. We're trying to make the, you know, not the best situation and make it work for us, which is, and we all want to see downtowns, you know. Survive and thrive and, um. If we, the intent is to actually limit the number of, of cars. It makes more sense that people are downtowning and walking around and, 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 you know, get resources. So let's not, let's. Center around our resources, which is not just the train station, but it's the stores and shops downtown, so. I think we should stick to what we originally came up with and if, you know, if we're not prepared to justify this at a meeting. And people are willing to, you know, shoot this down and not care about downtown, then. Fine, we'll, we'll have to try, we'll have to come back in the fall and try again. And I don't think the AG, you know, I don't think we're gonna get held up again because the AG. But I think we should stick to our guns, we came up with what we thought was thoughtful and worked best for town and I'm glad to stay with that.
I, I, I ag- agree absolutely, um. And we've gotten feedback both positive and negative, and I think that when it comes down to, you, people need to come to town meeting. I think we'll, we'll lay it out, I feel like it's very defensible, more than defensible, I think it's, it's, it's. Consistent with everything we've said in this town, at least in the six years that I've been involved, to revitalize the downtown. So I think, I, I'm, I think we put forward what we originally thought, um. You know, and, and as many people who complain about traffic are the same ones who complain about prices, and this is a supply and demand, and we're putting more, you know, over. Over time, it's not gonna happen quickly, but over time, this is really gonna help the housing in Wakefield.
So I, I think great points Julie and Matt and Greg, uh, I, I think and Robin and. Matt Bowen, I'd be interested in hearing what your, your thoughts are to, and reactions to, to those positions.
Sure, I was, uh, about to take myself off mute right before Julie spoke and I was gonna say that I, I. Agree with everything that Greg and Matt, um, just sort of laid out, that, uh, a lot of time thought has been put into this. Down to give sort of the most miniscule details, a lot of different options have been considered and. I think this is the more well thought approach, and if the goal is to see how close we can get it to many clients. It, it just simply doesn't make sense, given all the, the time that's gone into this and all the, uh, sort of. Concurrent objectives that we're trying to, um, to meet in doing this, both respect to. MBT accessibility and making downtown vibrant and strong. Uh, so for all those reasons that they just started to do as well.
Uh, and I guess to even put a finer point of what I was saying, if that's that. section, district, whatever we want to call it, five E, if we can remove it and still be within the, the required numbers both from a, uh, density and a capacity, then I'd be okay with moving that. But then if we have to start trading sort of, oh, well, we need to add these four parcels over here. And these, then I think that's, that's getting in the area that it, it just doesn't make sense for any neighborhood to just almost horse trade parcels just to get close to the minimum while, while having it make sense for Wakefield also.
Uh, Robin, I'd love to, to hear if you have a reaction to that last line of back and forth.
Yeah, no, um, as a designer, the numbers are not what I think of. I think of it the town, where the resources and both, you know, infrastructure and, and travel and, and shopping and so forth. And when, when you look at it as a, as a plan and where your boundaries, our boundaries make sense in terms of what's around it, distances and so forth. And, and so the numbers we have to achieve by the state standard and so forth have some arbitrariness to it, right? We have no idea how those numbers came, you know, truly came to be and so forth. So for us to, 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 to go down them doesn't make sense. It's, it's to stop and look at this, you know, the town and what, what, what makes sense. I guess I just want to recognize that there. I struggle when I hear people say that they want us to whittle down. Even if we were to do the absolute minimum, are they still going to support anything? Because I hear other things that they talk about, and I'm not sure even the minimum will make them satisfied, right? That, that there's a lot of talk of just, you know, it's a state regulation and they just don't support how this came to be. So I, I hear that they want less, but at the same time, is, is there ever a number small enough that they would support? So that goes back to me thinking as a designer and where are the boundaries that make sense? And I think that's what our, our conversations have defined as a design model that in the result, you know, in the end, when we use their formulations, gives us more numbers than they do. But as, as we've talked about, we have no idea what's actually ever going to be built. You know, this is not a, we are not developers saying that this is the future. It's just by right, someone could, you know, do this. So I'm not worried about tomorrow, all these units being built, you know?
I think that's, that's helpful. Uh, Aaron, did you happen to be able to validate if we drop that section, uh, five, what happens?
Yeah. So, uh, um, I by accident opened the wrong spreadsheet. I have like, I'm not kidding, fifteen different spreadsheets going on. Um, but let me try to pull up, um. So can you see my screen again? So I by accident removed, did this spreadsheet, um, on my backend here. And so, you know, removing Elm, if we didn't do the Elm part, we just removed E. This would get us eighteen twenty-nine, um, with a, um, dwelling unit capacity of sixteen point five. Um, if we did, I was trying to find my other spreadsheet here. Um, hold on. It should take me two seconds. Um, if we did the one with that's a little larger going up Elm, um, that should bring us to, um, sorry. That's smaller C and B, smaller. Um, if this is correct, uh, this would bring us to. Sorry, bear with me.
Aaron, I think, correct me if I'm wrong.
Nineteen thirty-eight.
It's, it's, if we took the map that we have currently proposed and we dropped E, I think what I'm hearing is that it would still pass. It's just would be pass, you know, we wouldn't have the twenty-three hundred units to be something less.
No, that's not correct. No, I was playing around with, we were talking about this map. So I was playing around with the smaller with this here. Um, and then I removed E here. This would bring us to eight nineteen thirty-eight. This map, if I remove E, this would bring us to that eighteen eighty-nine, eighteen twenty-nine. I'm sorry. Um, if I removed from our larger map, um, sorry. That would, um,
But you, you mind if I take over the screen for a second, Aaron? But I guess my point is that what I think I'm hearing, unless you tell me I'm incorrect, is if you take the, you know, this is the map that we've been currently evaluating. And if you just drop this section E, I think I'm hearing that the, it would still, we were still in B compliance.
I don't know that yet. No, I was going off the alternate one, um.
One with the top left cutoff too, right?
And it going only, oh, going to only Cedar. Yeah.
Well, I mean, I think we just said, we kind of want to stick with the original, but I think it's good to have all of these things because on the floor, we could talk about something like that.
Yep.
But I think this is what we put, personally, I think this is what we put forward.
So I think, I think I'm starting to hear a consensus, uh, form, um, prior to, um, proceeding any further than this conversation. I noticed there's a handful of uh, non-working group members who are on the line. And I'd like to just pause with the working group and potentially invite any public comment, um, based on the back and forth that has been going on with the working group. Um, and then if they're depending on what public comment we get, um, we could potentially, uh, consider, uh, proceeding.
I just, I just have a quick comment, Jim, before that. I personally, not, obviously not a consensus here, would be okay with this map minus that five. I think it still would meet what we're trying to do and making it work for Wakefield in downtown and, um, while also taking into account what we've heard. Um, I think we have heard people who, who have, I, I, I think a lot of the, um, narrative has been, you know, everybody wants to do the minimum. I don't think that's really what we've heard. I think we have heard people who are in support either, but, you know, understanding that this is a give and take, I would be okay with removing with this, but removing that, I guess what was called five E. Also, certainly not a consensus, uh, you know, it's just speaking for myself. Um, if it still works with the numbers, then I think it's still, it still works for me.
Uh, it would be, I keep opening the wrong. I have like six going on right now. Um.
And I guess, and to not put Aaron on the spot either, that, that, I mean, if you need to look into it more, that is, you know, if it, if it works, if it doesn't work, then I wouldn't be supporting. If you need to look at it more, you know, almost like we voted earlier, we gave, you know, Jim, the authority to look at other stuff in the bylaw, we could do the, the same. If it works, yes. And, and I think we could be very specific here. If it works, yes. If it doesn't, no, not a, you know, come up with a new district to make it work, but.
Yep. So, um, I'll, I'll pause the working group right now. And if any, if any member of the public wishes to speak, uh, please raise your mic. And as a reminder to turn your camera on if you're going to talk and, uh, provide your address. Uh, I see, uh, Councilor McLean, it looks like you've, uh, raised your hand.
Yeah, I did, Jim. Um, it's interesting. I don't see my picture up there, although I think I activated the video. Oh, that's okay. Um, you can hear me, right?
Yep, we can hear you.
Just a couple of points. Um, as you know, I was advocating for Greenwood, but I, that's not something that I think I would absolutely have to see, uh, to support this at town meeting. Um, so to Robin's question, you know, yeah, I think there are some folks that, you know, just want no part of this at all. Um, I think you're much more likely though to, you know, I don't know, never know how town meeting votes are going to go. And I'm, and I'm not about to predict them. But I think it's going to be more popular if it is pared down. Um, even if the district is, you know, just what we're looking at here. Uh, obviously my personal preference would be to trim it back. Uh, you know, when you go around Elm and you go around Elm Square and you come up to Elm, uh, I just, I walk that, that area all the time. I just, uh, don't really see, I'd rather see Aaron's map that took out the Elm portion. Um, and I think she had it at approximately eighteen twenty-nine. Um, and to Greg's point, I, I really think the best chance of getting a majority on this is if it is closest to the minimum, okay, it doesn't have to necessarily be, you know, sixteen ninety-nine or seventeen oh-two. But I think the closer you get it to that, the better off you are in terms of passing it once. I would agree with Jim that you know, if it passes at Fall Town Meeting instead, uh, as Steve had said last meeting, I, I don't think Greg was present, but Greg said he watched it. You know, you certainly had, you know, Steve saying, well, you know, similar to what Jim said, uh, I doubt the Attorney General is going to get, you know, file suit against us if, if we go to town meeting in the fall. I do think it's preferable, however, in my own opinion, to do the pared down district and, you know, obtain some of the votes like my own, you know, that, and, and others that would be willing to vote for the minimum district. If you did pare it down, have it done once and conserve not only your, all of your resources, but you know, Aaron's resources, our town resources. I've watched every one of your meetings. I feel almost like a part of the group in that sense. Um, you know, a lot of time is being spent, a lot of resources are being spent. So I'd like to see it trimmed. I've always felt a little, this is just off the cuff and I know, you know, Greg doesn't want to get into, you know, parcel trading, but I've always felt a little uneasy about the houses right on church with the view of the lake. You know, we've got a couple of historic houses down at the corner. And I know at one of your meetings you had talked about possibly, I think Matt Lowry actually initially brought it up, maybe considering, you know, taking those out. Um, I'd like to see a principal district that perhaps is not even as high as the eighteen twenty-nine that, um, that Aaron had there by taking out Elm and by taking out, um, the District Number Five. So those are just my comments. I, I think this will pass town meeting. I think it's less likely to pass if you go with what you had. You know, what we're looking at here without any pairing down. Um, not going to make any predictions. I don't think it needs, we have to focus on Greenwood. I'm not falling on my sword over that one. But certainly, you know, I think there, yes, there's been positive comment, um, but there is also, I think Jim recognized this last meeting has been, a majority of the comment has been going towards the minimum. You know, we are imposing a permanent, you know, think four, eight, twelve, right? Eight for general, twelve for single, and now we have four. And this four thousand is going to be with us, I think permanently. So to me, that's a big deal. Um, and I don't know how many units are going to be built anymore than anybody else does. But if we start, you know, jiggering the parking a little bit, changing from our current bylaw, um, if there's a special permit possibility, if someone doesn't get our member, Attorney McGrath from the last meeting doing his job, saying, how can you tell me I can't have this if it's a, if it's a matter of right? So I think in the future, we would have situations where we could wind up with more building than we're even expecting, depending upon how all this pans out. Um, and I respectfully disagree that this is all about downtown, you know, supporting the downtown. I think Matt said, you know, you, you know, you're not supporting the downtown if you don't support this. Uh, I, I totally disagree with that. I, I don't accept it. I think this is a bad law. I think we have to comply to the minimum. And I think we're going to live with it for a very long time. It does work against forty B. Uh, we are not at the ten percent. Our two percent, uh, claim has been turned down presently. The day after we were, you know, uh, received an award for becoming Housing Joyce, the next day we got a letter saying, you're not at your two percent, we're not buying your argument. So if you take wherever we are, eight point something percent, uh, you know, on forty B, what are we short? We're short over ten percent of eleven thousand two hundred or eleven thousand six hundred or whatever our units are. You know, we're still short a hundred sixteen before this building of market rate units even starts. So I think it is, you know, there are other considerations that I have relative to whether we should be doing a minimum district. So I just ask you to get as close as you can from a principled standpoint. Pass this at Springtown Meeting, so we don't have to do this over again. Um, and that's about all I have today. Thank you very much for listening. Thanks for, uh, recognizing public participation.
Thank you, uh, Councilor McLean. I see some.
Jim, just wanted to make just two click points, and I think Mike and I have sort of already discussed them is, I guess first, maybe not the first one, that historical um, point about historical sites up there is one, if they are in, not even on the National Historic Register or anything like that, but if they are historic, we have a separate historic bylaw. So we, we may actually benefit from including those parcels because the regulation doesn't say anything about historic. So we can get credit for those parcels where our own bylaw protects those parcels to a certain extent. Obviously something can happen as we saw with the mansion on Mansion Road. Uh, you know, no one came in to restore it. So it was, was, you know, torn down. Uh, but we do have a protection mechanism for those, but we still can get credit for those. So that actually might be beneficial. To the forty B point, Mike is correct that it does work against forty B. But on the other hand, it's only, uh, you know, ten percent. So if we do, I can't remember the numbers, but I ran the numbers. If it is to the minimum, it's only something, you know, a, a handful, I can't remember the exact numbers and I don't want to mess it up, but something like would have to add ten affordable units in town. If it is to the, um, absolute max, it'd be something like would have to add seventy or so. And that's the absolute maximum, the biggest district we've, we've proposed. And I think we, you know, we have an inclusionary zoning bylaw that requires uh, development over a certain size to provide eighteen percent. And we've, you know, started an affordable housing trust. And, and so there, there is a mechanism to, to help there. Um, so just wanted just to, you know, at least clarify and, and put the, the factual, the, the, the facts on those, those two points. I, I think they're very, they're very valid points. And it's something we need to, to, you can't just take this in a vacuum. But to, to at least contextualize those.
Yep. Thank you for, uh, for, for that. Uh, I also see, uh, from public.
Just something from what Mike said, because we actually haven't spoken to Greenwood.
Sure.
So we were, you know, Mike would know because having viewed it, we did look at Greenwood. I think I can say I'm not against zoning changes at Greenwood. I just don't think this is the moment under these rules and criteria is the moment to reconsider some changes at Greenwood. So as town does planning and looking at master plans, Mike recently referenced some master plan document done years ago that I've never seen. But so I would say I'm personally not against it. I just don't think this is the, the time or place or rules to look at Greenwood. And I'd be open to having conversations with folks under a different context. So it, it's, it's just not Greenwood's time with these things. But yes, I, as a transitorian development neighborhood, yes, it, I sup, I support people, you know, and businesses around.
Okay. Thank you for that. Um, so I see, uh, Julie, uh, has, uh, raised her hand. So as a reminder, please turn your camera off and then just state where, um, your address before you start, uh, providing feedback.
Hi there. Thanks for, um, inviting us to, um, speak tonight. Julie Scott, Central Street and for Central Street. I, a couple of things. When I watched the Traffic Advisory Committee meeting a couple of weeks ago, um, I kept hearing discussion about, um, ticketing and parking and, and mostly concerned about visitors to the area and how it can be a drain on the police force. And they were concerned about density. I got a lot out of the meeting. I've gotten a lot out of all of your meetings. But what I sensed from the police department was they were concerned about this added density to the downtown area. And I agree with so much of what Councilor McLean said. I, I don't really see how this is going to help the downtown by putting it all there. I would love to see some of it in Greenwood. That being said, I thought I heard at the Traffic Advisory Meeting. That they maybe suggested instead of one point five zero, I thought they said one point seven five. And somebody was going to check on that math, um, because they were concerned about visitors.
That's. You know, Julie, you know, there were, there was a stray comment from, I believe, Bill Renaud regarding potentially looking at that. And we, on the basis of where we would gone in the meeting thinking about going. And relief, providing park, you know, additional parking relief off that one point five number, made the decision that we didn't think that. Going the opposite direction was appropriate either. So we felt that keeping it consistent with what is currently on the books for. Other develop, you know, other parcels, uh, was appropriate. You know, there is a slight difference in terms of. The one point five, depending on the number of bedrooms versus two for three bedrooms and above, but we felt as if that on the basis of. We already have one point five as the standard for, for the majority of the new, new buildings that are developed, new units that are developed to match that. Instead of providing relief was probably more appropriate.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm concerned about there potentially being a lack of parking. I'm concerned that there would be neighborhoods that would have to have stickers and, and uh permitted parking and things like that, so I would. Hope that you could maybe revisit and rethink a little bit about the parking. It would be a shame if it would end up being like in Melrose when there's a snow emergency and so forth. People have to find. Parking in school parking lots, grocery store parking lots, that's what they do here in Melrose. They have to remove their car by six AM. Um, it's never been that issue in Wakefield. If you could, I just need some reassurance later on, um, that there will be enough parking. Thanks.
Okay, uh, anyone else from the public want to, uh, to raise their hand and brand any of the feedback? Okay, uh, seeing none, so a- and other members of the working group can tell me if you disagree. I think at this point. We need to make a decision of what we want to refer to the planning board. And then from a procedure perspective, the planning board will refer something to the town council. Then it will go back to the planning board, who will then hold a pair of public meetings. Prior to the inclusion on the warrant. So I think what I'd like to do with this group is discuss what is the, the map that we wanna refer to the planning board. And or consider, does it make sense to refer the planning board with the map as currently constituted on the screen? And maybe an alternate where we look at dropping that E. And then the, you know, we, we leave it to the plan, you know, we, we make a recommendation and then we leave it to the planning board ultimately to. You know, we have, we give them two options then include on the warrant based on, you know, them seeing it fresh. Or the, the balance of playing board seeing it fresh. Um, not sure if other people have a reaction to that, but. That seems like that may be a viable pathway, depending on what people feel as the, uh, the preferred option going forward.
Not to put it back on the planning board, but. How would, I mean, I, I, I have my view, it would, would be an option A and an option B, but is that. It's how the planning board approached that. Cause, cause it's gonna be, right, there's gonna be more. Public hearings would, would too on the, um. So it seems to make sense, uh, unless we, we just give our recommendation and I assume the planning board can do what they want with it. They could change it. They don't have to accept it or reject it. I'm assuming there's a middle ground. So maybe we just make our recommendation. Cause I don't have a view. I guess, I guess that's a roundabout way.
Yeah.
I guess I don't have a view.
And, uh, by removing, um. Section E with the current map we're looking at now, again, I wanna look at this more tomorrow, just to make sure I didn't screw up and have sixty-six, you know. Eight twelve units per acre again. Um, it would be around two thousand one hundred and fifty-nine, so it doesn't move the needle significantly. Um, kind of to that, if you removed Elm, it'd be like eighteen twenty-nine. Um, but you still would meet all the other thing, appropriate things we'd have to meet.
All right, Aaron, you see the eighteen ninety-nine is if you remove E and Elm?
Uh, yeah, so if you removed E, uh, up here. Are you, I'm doing my screen like I'm sharing my screen. Yeah, 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 and, uh, and E. Um, so basically it would be.
Here, you can take it back over, Aaron, if you want. And I think it also removes a portion of, uh, District Four. Along Salem and Pleasant, which I think we would probably wanna get away from.
So it removes this. And then it removes here, this area here, kinda like backwards L and then, uh, E.
Yeah, what I would advocate is if we do anything, I would advocate to evaluate removing E and the Elm component of C, but not change D. Because I think that that starts to look incorrect, for lack of a better term.
Okay, I gotta play around with more numbers, but yeah, okay. If anything, we go up from that eighteen twenty-nine or whatever it is, eighteen eighty-nine, eighteen twenty-nine.
Uh, Matt, I see that you're unmuted. Are you, it looks like you've got some, some thoughts.
Um, I'm just sitting here that we, we've spent, I don't know how many months doing this, and what we've come out with is the bare minimum. And it really kinda pisses me off that in Wakefield. This is what we constantly do, and we always do the bare minimum and expect great things from it. So, um. You know, if that's what it's gonna be, it's what it's gonna be, but I don't think we should be chasing doing the absolute minimum we can do. Go look for a doctor, you don't look for someone who just barely did the minimum to get to be a doctor. You want something a little bit more than that, and unfortunately, you know, we get this all the time when people come. Bring plans to us and, and buildings are jammed in there, and the developer says, well, we met your minimums, so there you go. But, you know, it's gonna be what it is in Wakefield, so I'm not gonna get too upset about it. I just don't wanna put my name on that. We, we've spent all this time and here you go, is the absolute minimum you can do. And it's gonna be most likely ripped apart anyways, so.
To, to Matt's point, I mean, I, I'd be comfortable with not removing anything. I'm with you, Matt. I, I. I'd be happy to put my name on something that I think, you know, i- it works well and works for Wakefield. Um, if the planning board at the end of the day decides something different to get it passed, I, I, yeah, I, I guess I was just offering something that I thought. Might help pass, but at the end of the day, I guess maybe that's not on the working group. So, yeah, Matt, if. If does anyone else in addition to me and Matt, I, I'd be happy to move forward too with that.
No, I, I would be more encouraged to sell something that's not the bare minimum at town meeting. Than to go out there and say, yeah, we did, we listened to you, we did as little as possible, and there you go.
Well, especially since we have, we, you know, un- unlike what we said at last meeting, we really do, in my mind, have two. Two town meetings for this, um, especially if we think, you know, others who would. If it does come down to it, have to litigate against the attorney general when it's on their timeframe, if we can pass and fall, if we have the backing of. Of that town leadership who has the power of the purse to. To help out with litigation. I'm all for, you know, doing what truly after many hours. Seems to work well for the town.
Yeah, I, I, I don't think anything, say that we're, you know, we're not taking. Ben for what's not the best situation and trying to fit it into the best way, and I, I think we've done a decent job of that. But I think we should go forward with what we've come up with, and if people rip it apart, fine, well. We'll let them be on the next meeting, so.
I mean, Jim, it sounds like before we kinda went back to this, it sounded like everyone was on, on board to continue with the map that we had, so.
Yep, so if, if, if everyone else feels, feels similarly, then I think that what we could do is we could take a vote. To refer the proposed map to the planning board. And to Matt's point, if the planning board elects to, um, you know, at through the public group comment process that they're gonna be going through. If they elect to, um, edit it in any manner, then, you know, that is under their purview, but. If, if this group feels the way I think we're, eh, starting to feel, may make sense for us to refer what we think is the, the appropriate map. Planning board and, uh, you know, let the chips fall as they may after that.
And the only thing I'll add is, uh, just so this group knows, I will be changing the title on what's being, I sent to you guys now to reflect what's in the by, uh. The bylaw, uh, the multifamily, um. As long as this M B T A communities multifamily overlay district, right now it just says like mixed use over, it just says an old thing that we put together with, um. With our G I S, so, um, it's different than the tool I play around with, and, uh, as long as you guys are com- comfortable with that, that's. Probably, and then the removal of something at the bottom, right? Um, as long as you guys are okay with that.
Yeah, don't take, think that's a rejection.
Okay.
So, so unless anyone disagrees, I, I think it makes sense to potentially have a motion.
Question, did you guys already? The way I, so I, I did watch the video, it seemed like this was already referred. Do we need another motion, another vote? We have to do so if we think we need it, that just seems like it's already referred. I don't, doesn't matter either way.
I, we did, um, the only reason I would, I would ask to do it again is because we were asked to kinda reconsider by different powers that be. So I think it makes sense where if, you know, we, we've reconsidered, uh, we had a, a thoughtful conversation around it, and if. People are, uh, continue to have the same position, I think it makes sense to take a motion and then have the entirety of the board or the working group, since we're all present. Uh, vote on it, so it's unanimous with no absentees.
Yeah, yep. So moved.
So, uh, so I think Greg. Uh, so I think I'm hearing Greg, you're making a motion to refer the proposed map. That I will pull up on the screen right now to the planning board for their consideration.
Correct.
And do I hear a second? So, uh, motion by Greg, seconded by Matt, uh, Robin?
Uh, yes, agreed.
Uh, Julie?
Yes.
Matt Bowen?
Yes.
Aaron Kokinda?
Yes.
Uh, Matt? Lowry?
Yes.
Uh, and Greg McIntosh?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So, uh, in that case, uh, we've got a bylaw as well. Uh, map that we have voted to refer to the planning board and, uh. Based on that, will the planning board roll first to town council and then start the public hearing process? So. I wanna thank everyone here for taking the countless number of hours and, uh, you know, I know a lot of folks have also sat through a number of the other. Meetings, uh, to either the planning board or the CBA or Environmental Sustainability Committee, um. And, and I guess I think above and beyond trying to come up with something thoughtful and, uh, thank you for, for getting to the end of this work product. So with that.
Yeah, I can't thank you enough. Thank you so much.
Thanks for your leadership.
Yeah, um.
It's not a word for planning.
Yes, it's, you know what? Yeah, I think you guys have all made it a lot easier than it could have been, so especially Aaron. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Tim.
You guys have put more work into it than me, but so. Yeah, it's always like her and cats. Not the easiest thing to do.
Yeah. Um, with that being said, does anyone else have anything else, you know, items unanticipated before we potentially move to a, an adjournment?
So, um, is just the point of order, is this, um. Are we, is this dissolving with many, or what's the next step? So are we keeping it together? What, what happens?
I would recommend kind of on standby and kinda see how things go, um, the next few months and then, um. And then kinda see how town meeting comes, because we may be right back here, um, revisiting what we discussed. Hopefully that's not the case, but. Um, I don't think we're dissolving the group quite yet. Jim, would you agree?
I, I think it makes sense for us to, to have the working group, uh, on standby until, uh, and defer any future meeting until. Um, at the very minimum until the planning board either re- refers this to town council or declines.
Okay, uh, I, I do kinda have a recommendation. If for some reason this does fail. At, at town meeting and. In a working group starts up again, I think perhaps it would be best to have a different, um, makeup. Just so people can't say it's the same people pushing the same stuff. That would be my suggestion.
So in that case, um, before we adjourn, would it make sense to entertain a motion that would, uh, either. Dissolve this body if the planning board includes, you know, successfully gets this proposed map and bylaw on the warrant. And if not, to reconvene in order to see what the, the working group will do about it.
So who actually appointed, wouldn't that be up to them, whoever appointed this board? I guess I would sort of leave it up to, I can't remember if it's planning board or town council, that would be up to them, not to us.
I guess that's true, right? It's town council.
Yeah, I would leave it up to town council. I think it's premature to.
And to Matt's, to Matt's point, no one can, if they say it needs to be the same members, no one can make any other serve, so.
Yeah, and it's gonna be a different, you know, there'll be probably different counselors, for example.
Did Julie just make an announcement?
No.
All right, so we'll just keep it at bay for right now.
Yeah. Uh, any, anything else unanticipated by the chair? Okay, in that case, um, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, move by Julie, seconded by Matt Lowry, uh, we'll call vote, Greg.
Yes.
Matt Bowen?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Matt? Lowry? And Julie?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So passes, uh, we adjourned and, uh, thank you all for the time. And again, thank you all for, uh, for working to get to this work product. It's been a, it's been a pleasure, uh, and hopefully, uh, you know, it'll be smooth sailing between now and town meeting and then we'll see what happens.